Alright, OBS has kicked in, we're good to go. Just for my own personal sanity, yeah, I got plenty of room in the storage drives. Ah, man, this week is going to suck, for everything that needs to get done. But hey, same lovey, on that note. I'm gonna tune in, get started, so it's, without further ado. Alright guys, it's about 11:56, I'm gonna get started, I know people will trickle in. I'm gonna have a very packed day today, we've got this, and then I'm gonna try to be sneaking some Daisy stuff here and there, because I've got this other thing I'm testing, because the funds from that are paying for the graphics card issue that happened last week. And then we have the Colab op, which a squad of you are going to, and then we've got the SCP op. So, my plate's full today, for lack of a better term. But, first off, with this Town Hall meeting, I've already forgotten the number, I just am used to trying to run them at the start of every month, but I just wanted to thank you all for, not only attending, but actively playing, viewing, wherever you fall in the spectrum of the... How everything works here, simply because we're actually very close to having all of this to where we need it to be, if that makes any sense. Normally, I would say the few two or three at most points that we'd be focusing on this month, but we are... We're at least at five or six, so I'll be hitting them as I go along through a list I made, but... This all wouldn't be possible without you guys, so I appreciate you being here, and I really do hope you enjoy what's coming this month. So with that being said, I'm gonna first talk about operations, so the things that won in the polls after fine-tuning them with the... Or fine-combing them, I guess would be the proper term, was Half-Life, Modern Day and Bio-Defense and SCP-5000. Those are all done in terms of modsets, I still have to make a preset for Half-Life, that'll be up by Tuesday. You'll notice me say that quite a bit in this stream here, though. Just because Monday and Tuesday are my less busy days to get all this stuff done, but... We'll be starting up all of that within the next week or two, because we need to finish out, I still have a Vietnam mission I need to run, if not two. I might just run only one more, though, for the sake of scheduling, because next week, you know, it starts transitioning into the next month. And then, this should be the last SCP facility op tonight, again, was supposed to be finished by last Wednesday, but the graphics card issue that happened, I'll touch up on that again. But, that's all ready to go tonight, I'm also gonna be testing some Spectator stuff on that one, because I know some people have asked in the past, if they die, can they get a Spectator slot? So I'm finally getting around to testing that appropriately by having a dedicated Spectator slot, but we'll see how all that goes down. Otherwise, there's also a Joint op on the 4th, that's in the Colab channel, any slot in that roster is open, ready to go, you just have to DM me and I can go and fill you in on that.
Send in Goat Team Six now.
And then there will be a BT op on the 2nd, which is the Wednesday, the Black Templar ops are gonna be every Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month going forward, because I have something else planned, which we'll talk about for the Wednesday slot, and we'll see how that goes. Checkpoint RP is going to be on the 12th at 3 o'clock Eastern Standard Time, Pay for Pain is going to be on noon, or excuse me, the 6th at noon Eastern Standard Time. It's gonna be a mini-one again for the G-card issue. Cog Ops are going to be on the 5th/12th, and that is it, because... I'm not gonna be here on the 19th, because I'll be taking a vacation on the 3rd week of August. So on the 26th, when I get back, they're gonna be hosting another Kill Cog. And then Cog also has a new list of rules, which I will publish when we get closer to the 5th, next Saturday. And then, the next MCO, I'm gonna shoot for the 2nd of September. So we'll see how that goes. Now, with this month, we're also gonna be starting the new Zeus program, it's a two-month period, the first month is the Trial period, which we're starting. That is going to have Charlotte Zeus-ing on the 9th, these are all Wednesdays, by the way, Jason on the 16th, and Cage on the 30th. They will have free reign, I will be playing on the ground in either a Squad Leader or Ground Command position to best assess what they do. But you guys will also have a critical component, I'm gonna be relying on what you guys post in the Feedback channel about the operation, along with my own feedback in selecting which one of those three. Next month has three or four Wednesdays, depending on how the month falls, to Zeus, something that they pick. The winner will be announced, I wanna say within the first few days after the 30th, after Cage is up. I'm gonna then give them a few days to put a poll out, so you guys vote a modset that they wanna Zeus with, as what they do on Wednesdays, and then I'll be playing those on the ground, and then, in October, we will restart the program, pick three new Zeuses, and go from there. So, that program, I know people have been asking for, you know, they want perms or rights to Zeus in here, and again, the only other person that bypasses that is Krossk, because I'm not sure if you guys have ever seen a Project Enchanted op, but he's working his way to start that up again, it'll blow your mind, it's great with what he does, but he's the only person I would trust because of that quality of work, and the rest, you know, we have this program for. Plus, it helps cycle people out, I'm a very big fan of making sure if people are Zeus-ing in the community, they also need to actively be playing. So I feel like this is a great system to, you know, not only get a bunch of fresh blood in, but it's from people that actively play the ops and know what, you know, may and look for. So, we'll see how this goes, could be a total dud, could be something amazing, could be something in between, but I'm personally excited to see what we come out with that. I'm gonna touch on the YouTube channels briefly, just because the background of what I do, this has actually taken up a lot of time, so... With the new system I've set up and play for how missions are made here in yadda-dah, it's left me with a lot more time, and I've used that time to completely frontlog the PvP Shenanigans channel, literally into next year. This month, I'm gonna be focusing mainly on my own channel, because I have about 135 videos I still need to edit, which will give me months to even years of content. It's just, it takes a lot of time to do that, it's, I've kinda suffered a little bit, because the graphics card died last Saturday, or Sunday, excuse me, again, I said I'd been mentioning that a few times. But, you know, the processing power between a 1080 Ti and a 3080 Ti, it's night and day for that, so... Hopefully, I'm waiting on a 4080, I have it, I'm just waiting on a new power cord, because it doesn't have the range needed, so that'll come in a few days. And then I should be good with all that, one second. Sorry, I streamed these two to then, you know, put the VOD up for people that don't come in here, and people with sub messages, so I just gotta let them pass. To the stream, I'll read out all the subs after this, and then we'll transition to the Daisy. But otherwise, my main focus this month will be on that channel, along with, again, other main focuses, but you know, when I'm not doing Arma stuff, it'll be on that. Because I wanna try to get the footage all frontlogged, because after that, I'll have a lot more time to just focus on whatever I want. But with that, we're also going to be trying this month to do a lot of extra stuff. If you noticed, I've talked about, there's gonna be a Tuesday op today. Also, it's Sunday, I haven't announced the Monday op yet, that's a pain, I'll probably have to announce it tonight, as well as the Tuesday op, slotting's gonna get a bit difficult. I'm gonna be honest, after walking around for 14 hours yesterday, I came home at 2am and just crashed, and then I woke up around 10. I had to fix the mission for today, for the SCP, because of the tunnel thing, and I completely forgot to do that, so that's on me. There's a new mod set out for that mission tonight as well, make sure if you're coming to play, you download that. But I'll get Monday and Tuesdays ops announced tonight. Probably around 8 or 9 o'clock, whenever I finish, and we'll go over policy for that. Later in this month, again, Tuesdays, Fridays, maybe on Saturday or Sunday, whenever I can, I'm going to at least try to host one extra op a night. I already have a Tuesday op ready, next Tuesday's op I have nearly done, and then, I've got, I've got three or four different random things planned, just to help vary things out. And it'll be a smaller scale, too. Alright, looking over my notes here, another major focus, and this wasn't gonna be a focus till next month, but again, the graphics card thing kind of forced it forward, because it makes a lot of money, and I need that, because, you know, equipment's expensive. The Daisy plugin stuff, which we'll again be doing two tests of today, we're just really working on expanding on that, and... Basically seeing what we can do with it, we've already seen quite a bit of its potential. I know, by the end of today, I'm talking with a guy named Bilow, who runs the Nemalsk server, that we've been frequenting from time to time. We're gonna do a makeshift test of the plug-in, not the plugin itself, but the concept of the plugin, one second. Sorry about that, another sub message. Been doing like a test of, you know, what if we had it on a dynamic server with people going around, what will happen? So I will know if that's gonna be a good, excuse me, something we'll do on Tuesday. I won't know if he's available to do that till tonight, though, so I'll put an announcement in the Daisy channel, once he confirms or denies that we are able to do it on Tuesday or not. If not, we'll reschedule, but I know Ghost Wolf and I were working on something to get the server on a potential dedicated box. However, the plugin is taking first and foremost, but... If we are able to get it on a dedicated box, we'll be able to bring back Daisy events and Daisy Pay for Pains, too. I know some people have been asking for those to come back, so, we're working towards it, but, again, it's just dependent on a lot of people and a lot of schedules lining up to get all this to work. Alright, documentation for the mini-checkpoint RP and the Pay for Pain, again, will come out by Tuesday. Again, graphics card delayed everything, but I'm hopefully gonna get back on track by the end of this week. Checkpoint RP, thanks to Skelly, has, we've added a local mod to it, if anyone remembers Libra's add-ons, that I would often link in some of the TSB ops I did. That's coming back to take a local mod, to put on the workshop that adds a bunch of items, which is gonna be useful for the checkpoint RP. The system is basically gonna be two German checkpoints in that one town that we all play, that's the French town with the bridge on it. Everyone knows it, I just can't remember the name on the top of my head, I'm sorry, guys, I'm frickin' wiped right now. But, there's gonna be a black market system, there's gonna be some merchants, I'll get all that sorted in the documentation, but the mission file's ready to go. I sent it to Valkyrie like a week and a half ago, and she built some really great checkpoint framework and whatnot. The slots are all set, I just have to, basically make the document, which I've been procrastinating on, admittedly, and then, you know, G-card died and all that shenanigans. But again, I'll have that all done by Tuesday, and then we'll get everything going forward beyond that. Now, as I have been promising the past few months, I finally went in and redid the Patreon perks. I also figured out that there's been an issue we've had on the Twitch integration to Discord, where some people weren't getting their proper perms, and I found out it's because the bots got stuck. Basically, they weren't refreshing anymore, so I had to manually refresh that in the Patreon bot, so if people that used to have subs or Patreon perks, if you notice, you might have lost access to a few channels, that's because I finally figured out where the damn reset button was. Every month, I'll be coming up with new perks to add for Patreon, but right now, it's just some priority slotting stuff, some access to some certain locked channels where I show off what's coming, as well as channels where I talk to some of my mission devs, and basically, again, showing more detail what's coming. Because again, we got a lot of fun stuff, just to name it off the bat, I have an oil rig in the works, I've got some CBRN stuff in the works, we've got some more horror stuff in the works, and actually, two of those three things are already done, we're just waiting to actually run them. And, we've got an SCP-5000 op with a full presidential bunker system and some custom scripting inside, which is going to be done tonight. So that's also really fun, but again, all to be run this month, amongst other things. Speaking of which, I would like to personally thank Crox, Cross, excuse me, Valkyrie and Six, because without the three of them, Valkyrie and Six working on mission development, and then Cross working on custom scripting, I would not be able to do the workload that I am doing right now, which is why I'm really happy with this month, because we are very ahead on what I knew I would not be able to do alone, essentially. By being able to export some of the workload off to them with some of these mission files, it's again freed me up to... Not only work on additional files, but also work on, you know, time with the Twitch plugin integration for Discord. Honestly, just everything, really, because... All of the tedious stuff of what would normally, you know, take me six hours to build like a custom oil rig or build an SCP facility, I can just offload that to them, and then I can focus on the kit building, the add-ons, not the add-ons, the, actually, it is technically, you know, the custom setting configuration, making sure Ace Medical is properly calibrated for the mission with your ballistics based off of what the enemy's using and what the enemy scripts do. I know it's not 100% effective, because we had the issue with the cave system the other day, but... It just means we can, you know, get more stuff out there, but we can't really, you know, catch 100% of the stuff, because that's just Arma. But nonetheless, I hope you guys have been enjoying it, I hope you've been enjoying the more custom stuff that's been coming out with the SCP complexes, the custom ideas, like the Vietnam PvP+E stuff we've been doing, and you know, it's only going to go up from here, is what I'm trying to say. But again, to those three, thank you so much, and if you see them, make sure you thank them for all their hard work here, because without them, this would not be possible. But, with the new system we're doing, since we run polls in the middle of the month, most of the August ops, even the extra ones I mentioned on the Tuesdays or Fridays, those are done. I was gonna run a single Half-Life op, just to throw my hat in, because the Half-Life modset is gonna be the one that the other three Zeuses take on. That's done, the bio-defense ops are done, we're waiting on that one SCP-5000 op, and I'm gonna add an extra one to make it a Pay for Pain-esque style, you know, a mini-one. And then the other two I have, I think are the only two missions I have left to do. And that's gonna be a custom survival, you can save your kit between the missions and reload it the next day. But that's gonna be also horror-esque. I think the only other thing I really need to double down on is the POG stuff, which segues into my next point. On Thursday nights at 7pm Eastern Standard Time, that's normally when I run the POG operations. However, I'm gonna extend the invitation to anyone here, I know that's a bit of an awkward time slot for some of you, especially in Europe, but that's the only time I can do it, but I had had a plan for a while of if I ever magically had more time, I would expand on what I did in POG's original campaign, but increase it by a factor of five or tenfold. If anyone remembers Makarov's campaign involving basically a PMC and you kept track of your own gear, this is gonna be my take on it. And what it's gonna essentially be is, you join in a mission, you organize amongst yourselves, and there's a list of contracts marked on the map, and you go out and do them. If you are a part of them, you get a percentage of the payout, and then you can use some of that pay to basically buy more gear. What I'm also going to expand on is if you get anything in the AO and come back, between the Thursdays where we run the op, I'm gonna have this massive... And I'm already stressing about it, because it's already about a third of the way done with it, but it's a listing of every RHS cup weapon, three CB factions, and another one gets called Free World or New World Armory, it's a lot of weaponry in there. And I've got basically custom buy and sell sheets for everything, and I'm still trying to figure out if I'm gonna do all the ammo variations, I'm probably not, though, because at that rate, it's just ridiculous. But, how I'm gonna keep track of it, because if I have even like 20 or 30 people doing that, it's gonna be ridiculous for me to keep up with that. So I'm gonna just trust people by giving them access to the document, and then I'll give them each a page, and then you guys can keep track of your weapons and assets and yadda-dah, and if I find you're abusing it, I'm just gonna ban you from the op, because I can't deal with that at that point. But, I've got, I'm writing my own rule sets and systems for all of that, and we'll see how things go, but, basically... You're your own PMC guy, you work with what you got, you get the buyouts, and then there'll also be a group pooling for resources if you wanna get upgrades that help everyone. But, that's my next project, we're gonna start it on Thursday, after I get everything that I mentioned that I wanted to get done on Tuesday, that's where I'm gonna be focusing on finishing by the Thursday, so that's another fun thing that we're gonna be coming out with. And then my next major project is, after all of this stuff is squared away on, by the end of August, I'm gonna start working on my commission stuff again, which... Background, I've had people DM me in the past, slide me some money, and I make them a mission, I'm not, like... Similar to, if this was last month and I was mentioning the Patreon revamp, this is me mentioning that I'm going to revamp the commission side of things. Just because I need to sit down and figure out what I wanna do about that, but now that I have a great system for making missions, I can ramp up production on that. I'm also gonna do a little bit of Discord cleanup sometime this month, don't know when, but I'm scheduling it for this month, and I'll figure out where I need to go and do that. But otherwise, that should be it, in terms of general points. Additional things I can think of on the top of my head, because I'm taking a vacation on the 3rd week, and because of how I now have this system with the polling, I might bump the polling dates up from the 15th to around the 12th, to give myself a few extra days after the polls conclude, and set on like the 17th or 18th, they conclude on the 15th or 16th, and that'll give me two or three days to make and test the new modsets for the next month's missions, so then I can get those exported to the mission devs. That way, while I'm off on vacation, they can get, you know, a majority of that stuff done. So, don't be surprised if you see the polls come out a few days early. But beyond that, I think that's anything, everything I can think of on the top of my head, beyond what I covered and what I have in my notes. So if you guys have any questions, I invite you in the chat channel tied to the Town Hall to type them in, and then I will look over on my Twitch chat and answer any questions that they have. So if you have a question, feel free to ask it, now is your time. And, again, after this, I'm gonna try to transition right into Daisy. Ah, Bloodwing just came downstairs, scared the shit out of me, hi Boo. Alright, reading over everything. Yeah, I can have the Twitch mods police certain things, I just don't know how that would be done in any system I'm working on right now, so we'll just have to see how that goes, but I appreciate it, Moxie. For now, I just, I just need you guys to keep working on, really just making sure the Twitch chat doesn't go stupid like it sometimes does. No offense to the viewers, but you guys can be a little autistic, actually, no, it's really just Zam, but you get my point. How is death gonna be taken in the PMC campaign concerning your gear? That is something I'm still working out, because there's two systems I can do. I can either have a... How would I put it? One second. Alright, there's a few different ways I can do it, because Makarov had the system of, you can't do any looting, but if you die twice, you lose that character. The issue is, because I'm gonna allow for looting, people can just loot each other's bodies, so I can't really do that, so it might just be a matter of, if you die, I might have to either make it a one-life or a two-life knight. I think the best course of action would be, I set it up as a two-life system for the evening. If you die first, you get the opportunity, you know, it's a mulligan, you can go back, loot your body, but don't be salty if someone loots your body for your gear as well. I will have like a starter base kit of essentials, such as medical and at least, you know, a basic weapon, which will be on par with the first few maps of enemies that you fight. But, you know, by hopefully the second or third mission, you'll have looted a few weapons that you can fall back on as well. But that's, it'll probably end up having to be like a two-life scenario with a Spectator mode tied to it, but again, we'll figure that out. And then, yeah, it's gonna be arsenal loading, which again, is why I'm gonna be basically watching you guys like a hawk, to make sure you're not loading anything stupid. And it's funny enough, it's not actually a matter of trust issues I have with you guys, it's trust issues I have with one or two people in POG that I know are going to abuse it, and I'm probably gonna, I'm already seeing myself having to ban them from their own stuff, but at the same time, it's like, bro, follow the rules at that point. But again, we'll see it in a document come out, and I'll go over everything, so... There won't be a need for a Quartermaster with it, though. Again, it'll all, it's gonna be on a bit of a trust system, which again, I don't like always doing, but with how extensive this is going to be, even though I have a lot more time these days, I've already done a system like this for a group of Mandalorian players years ago. And it worked out quite well, but it was a lot of maintenance, and that was only for like 10 to 15 dudes at a time. This can, POG alone can get up to 20, and then if I add you guys, that can get up to 30 or even 40, depending on how many people show up. And that's just something I can't feasibly manage, which is why it's gonna be based on a trust system. But if I see someone go in with something that I know they don't have, because I can, I can look into things and, you know, see what you guys bring in and out of the AO, and they've got the better inventory mod, so what I'm also thinking of doing is, just having people... Send a screenshot of their kits when they end the game, and that'll just give me a nice image of everything you have, I'll make a submission channel somewhere. And then, you know, it'll be up to you to log all those items on, but if I see you then pull out like an AK-12 next time, and you pulled out three Kar-98s, and you had a basic bitch M4 at the start of the previous op, then I know something's wrong, you know what I mean? I'm also looking into potentially saving the mission file in terms of kits, there's a few mods that exist for stuff like that, but... In testing them in the past, and the reason I haven't used them in the past, is because they're also not 100% effective, so, again, we'll see. It's something I need to really double down on on Wednesday to figure out some of the really tough questions, but I've got working theories for them as well, so we'll see how things go. But yeah, that's another issue, is the file does get very large when you log everything, but, we'll figure out how things go based off of that. Rules need to be hammered into players' heads at the start of every op, oh yeah, no, I will, like what we had with the CBRN campaign. I'll literally just pull everyone aside, lay down the law, lay down any custom scripts, and then go for it. And if we see people intentionally friendly fire or stuff, or I see a situation where someone intentionally lets someone else bleed out, loots their gear, then they're gonna get probably a warning, and if they do it again, I'll just ban them, because I can't... There's so many ways you can cheese a campaign like that, but, again, it's difficult, but, you know, things have to be handled on a case-by-case basis. So I'd rather allocate my time into dealing with the issues from things like those that I know are going to arise, rather than just policing every single item. But, we'll see how things go, and again, 50/50, this does get shot down by people's behavior, but again, I'm more than happy just to wave a ban hammer instead. So we'll see how things go, any other questions? While we wait for those, I'll look over to my Twitch chat. We'll see how anything comes up. What's the scale of the checkpoint RP in terms of player base and the mechanics? So I'm working out either a 40 or a 60-person player base for checkpoint RP. It's gonna be two teams of six guarding each checkpoint, and then some internal patrol teams of four. There's gonna be some merchants also as players that are gonna basically set prices for certain things, and the main goal for the players is basically to smuggle in items, sell them for money, leave the checkpoint, and then they can use that money to then buy other gear from another merchant, which will give them their weapons and all this other stuff. So, I'm probably also gonna have players have individual areas, and similar to what I did with the Last of Us checkpoint RP, where, you know, you can go back, you can put stuff in your inventory, and then use it for a different life later. So, you know, the first half will be you building yourself up, and the second half will probably be shenanigans. So, again, that'll all be on the documentation, and we'll see how things go. Otherwise, so basically it'll be like Fallout stuff, but with lessons learned. More or less, again, I can't, it's hard to balance things for a bunch of individuals that may or may not take it seriously or just meme around. So I'm just gonna put out a loose template, set my expectations, and if I see people violating my expectations, I'll just teleport them away, give them a warning, and if they still violate it, then I'll just kick them from the op. Because again, there's no way I, as a mission maker Zeus, can regulate player behavior and interaction. I can, I just have to get rid of them, make the example, and then move on, and hope that's enough, and if it's not, I'll just keep making examples, and so I weed out all the bad apples. Alright, just scrolling up to see, I don't see any other questions, I'll hydrate in a second. Any other questions from, okay, nope, we're good. Now, of course, if you have any questions about anything, guys, feel free to DM me, I thank you all for being here, but otherwise, I gotta get the rest of my day started. But, yeah, appreciate it, guys. And I'm sorry I'm so slow this morning, I only had like six hours of sleep. But, if I don't see you for the Vietnam op players today, I'll see you for the SCP op, otherwise, I'll see you in viewership, but feel free to enjoy your Sunday, guys. And again, if you're part of that Sunday op today, make sure you download the new modset that I just announced, it just takes out the cave mod, because again, that aforementioned issue from the other day. Muffin, I'll let you finish typing whatever that is, and then I'll wrap this up. Okay, that, no problem, buddy. Hope you guys enjoy everything, I'm gonna go test out some additions to the Daisy plugin now, so I'll see you guys later. Alright, that went well. Alright, real quick, BJ, thanks for the 31-month resub, Moxie, thanks for the 58-month resub, though it's a forced resub for you. Spooky, thanks for the 10-month resub, I'll see you later today for the Vietnam mission, and Lizard Shaman, thanks for the 22-month resub, I hope you all keep... And Lizard Shaman, thanks for the 22-month resub. I hope you all keep enjoying the operations, and I do hope you get a nice kick out of what we're about to do with the DayZ plugin. Let me message Ghost Wolf, make sure the plugin is on the server because he did a bunch of updates. And he told me he might be late. You're uh, you're gonna notice what we uh, added a few things. Mox, no, I'm not ignoring your message. Um, Mox, the reason I'm giving Crossk the ability to Zeus and bypass that program is, I don't know if you've ever seen a Project Tension op, but it's, it's gold. Eh, like I, eh, it's, it's hard to talk about it without me just sounding like I'm completely like head over heels for it, but it, he was doing custom video intro and outros before I even thought about it, before I even realized that that was a thing. He does his own custom sound design. He does his own custom bunkers. He makes his own custom assets, his own mods, his own everything. He makes his own custom scripts where you can jump around like a frickin' leapfrog. It's, it's extensive. And I've never had a bad time in it. So, like, someone with that quality and you know, that level of trust I have with that person, it's uh, it's, it's good. Just gotta trust me on that, that it's good, which is why I'm really excited for when he uh, when he'll finally decide to come in. But let me go ahead. I'll stop the-